Like that, Sampson Delila. Okay, today is Tuesday, November 15th, 2022. We call the village board meeting order. With a clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Frankie?
Here.
Trustee Lister?
Here.
Trustee Miller?
Here.
Trustee Proctor?
Here.
Trustee Schmidt?
Here.
All board, no, I'm sorry. We have a quorum tonight. We have five board members here, so we can go ahead and get started. Tonight, we don't have an invocation, but we are going to do the pledge allegiance. As a matter of fact, we have some scouts down there to lead us. So if I want, please stand. The flag's over there. Gentlemen, I'll let you lead the pledge allegiance. Go ahead, start it. Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please have a seat. We delayed starting tonight so Mr. Plasic could get here, so I did not want him to miss any parts of this. So we took our time. We're going to go a little slow, let him get set up, because he's here to hear the concert announcements also, which will be coming soon.
That is here for your report.
That's part of the concerts announcement. I'm trying to look out here. We see younger people. We've got a special band this year. I want to see if the younger crowd pick up on this. So we're doing that for them. So while he's getting set up, we can go ahead and still do the approval of the minutes of October 25th, 2022.
I move approval of the minutes of the regular board meeting held on October 25th, 2022 as submitted and dispensed with the reading.
Second.
We have a motion by trustee Lister, second by trustee Frankie. So we missed trustee Frank, huh? You get all planned out?
No, we miss him, bud. You know, we step up and help each other out.
You did a good job.
Yeah.
So all in favor again?
Everyone time?
Yeah.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let the record show and ask approval. Now we move on to mayor's and trustees' report, but we're going to give Mr. Plasic a second because we've got a lot of stuff to talk about. I know he's going to want to get caught up on it, so I'm going to go kind of slow here. Okay. Mayor's report, a few items tonight, Mr. Frankie, so bear with me. First off, the bricks from the bowling alley. As of today, we have sold almost 400 of those bricks. So we still have some available, Ms. Trump?
Yes.
Okay, so we still, am I close to, right, close to 400?
Yes, I believe the last number is 379.
379. And remember, they're $5 each, just come to the village hall. They have a little logo on it. But again, all the money goes to the Oak Grove Carers Program, which is our program that fights the disease of addiction. So if you can, come on by and get a piece of history here in Oak Grove. Also, just make sure I got all this done. Okay, good. On November 12th, just as passed earlier, I had the opportunity, and I know trustee Proctor was there, longtime park commissioner Ralph Souter, the park's name, Souter Point. It's a little area for creek stabilization, but you can also fish off it. And anyone who knows Ralph knows he's a huge fisherman. And also, you want to put a canoe in Salt Creek whenever you want. Right there's a perfect place. Walk down in the steps and utilize the creek there. So it was a little chilly that day. Ralph said it would have been like Thursday, 7:60, he would have been out there fishing for us. But yeah, it was very cold that day. But we got through it and it went very well. Also, you're going to be hearing a lot of shortages coming up. We've been hearing that already. And one thing they've been talking about is diesel fuel, maybe in short supply, this winter especially. And to the credit of Kobe's team, you've already got your full allotment of diesel fuel, 11,000 gallons, so you're all filled up.
Yes, we, I think we actually got close to $18 a gallon.
$18, that's even what I thought. So we've got our diesel fuel for this coming winter, for our trucks, plows, and all that. So, and we got our salt?
So the salt's on the agenda tonight. But we have plenty of salt for the season. This is just to replenish us as the year goes along.
So in good shape on that?
Yes, sir.
Now, you guys didn't have to go out today. It was too warm, right? No salt?
No, yeah, we didn't go out.
Okay, first snow today. So we're in good shape for this coming winter. And Kobe, thank you for being on top of all that. Appreciate it.
Can I just add a quick question? Since we didn't put the plows out, does that mean we'll still continue with the leaf collection?
Oh, yeah, leaf collection goes to December 2nd. That has not been changed or stopped. Nope, we're still good. And yeah, leaves are really coming down now. You probably picked up a lot more this past week or so than you've all, almost all year. So, thank you. So yeah, so what trustee Proctor was talking about, we're still doing leaf collection. Every week, we do every house. So you still got next week and the week afterwards. So the week of Thanksgiving and the week after Thanksgiving, correct Kobe?
Yes, sir, but it is always weather contingent, just in case we get a
A snowstorm.
A big snowstorm.
Right. Okay, and we've had those a few, well, unfortunately, the leaves are there till next year.
Right.
So they get plowed up. Also, good news, Ardentite Road, they should be applying the second coat of asphalt, if not this week, next week?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, should get it down. So all the asphalt will be down on Ardentite Road that runs from about Brantwood up to just past the, by the flower shop there, Blooming Flowers. And that should be all done. There will be some sidewalks that may not be done, but they are going further than we thought on that, are we right?
Yes.
So they could come close?
We are making an agreement with them to continue through and do the winterizing necessary to try to push as far as they can get. It'll cost us a couple bucks, but it's worth trying to get it done.
So we may get it all done, hopefully?
It might be all done.
So we could get the project done still this year?
Well, we still have landscaping and
Right, but the sidewalks and the street all done?
Yes, sir.
The street will definitely be done?
For sure.
And the entryways?
Yes.
Just some sidewalks on the west side we're worried about.
Correct.
Okay. So our hope is, as Kobe's saying, that we might get even all the sidewalks done. We'll come back next spring, finish up landscaping, some grading and all that. But we hope they have Ardentite Road pretty much done this year, and that's a big, good project. Kobe, you guys did a great job with all the strikes and all the issues going on to get through. That'd be phenomenal for us. And we're doing well on all of our other road projects. They're pretty much on punch list items now.
Correct.
So we're in good shape. Thank you. Also, our police officers, which as everyone knows in Oak Grove, we support 1 billion percent, all now wear body cameras. So all of our officers, this is done three years in advance of the state mandate. Remember, they got their cameras down three years in advance. So all running chief? So we got them. Again, our officers support wearing body cameras. We know they do a good job. They got nothing to hide. Matter of fact, it's great because they get to see how good job they do and sometimes how not so good the other people are. So we're excited about that. They're up and going. Also tonight, I want to ask the board, we have an opening on the zoning board of appeals, and I'd like to put forth Scott Fowler to fill that position. So I need a motion to appoint him to the zoning board position?
So move.
Second.
We have a motion by trustee Lister, second by trustee Miller. Any questions, comments? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let the record show and ask approval. So Mr. Fowler will be sworn in at the December board meeting, and that fills up the zoning board of appeals. Tree lighting is coming up a week from Friday, November 25th, right out here. As we done, what year is this, the 24th or 25th?
I think 25.
25?
Mm-hmm, 25th.
Our 25th year. We brought that back when this board first came together back then. It was done back when we were kids, and we brought it back to the village. The tree's out there already. It's a gorgeous, big tree. The Frankie family, no, not trustee Frankie, no relation, but the Frankie family donated the tree. It's a beautiful blue spruce, and it looks great. So Kobe, you guys did another good job on that. I know they got to decorate and everything, but it looks good. And so that happens on the 25th, 4:30 PM, New Colony 6 starts the concert. 5:30, we flip on the lights, and if Santa doesn't see it, young guys, we shoot off a firework display like no tomorrow. And then I think this here, Santa's going to have a special escort. So for the little ones, Santa will be there to see you. For the big little ones, we're going to have the makers wanted race car, the number six race car. We'll lead Santa in, and you get a chance to go look at the car, get a picture by the car, see the engine, you can see the race car that'll be racing in the Chicago race next July. So we're excited about that. We're all taking bets, will more people go look at Santa or more people go look at the race car? The little kids will be at Santa, the big kids will be at the race car. So we're looking forward to it. It should be a great night and a lot of fun for everyone. This past Friday, Veterans Day, we had the chance to dedicate our new veterans memorial location there at the corner of Beaster Field and Wellington. And it was a chilly day, but we had a phenomenal, a phenomenal turnout. And we thank everyone. Kobe is a very happy man over there. Kobe was a little nervous because of the strikes and all the issues going on. We were originally going to try to have a dedication on the 4th of July, but because of strikes and the problems going on during the summer, it was pushed off. And I know Kobe was a little nervous about Veterans Day, but again, your staff did unbelievable. It came out beautiful. The water over, as a matter of fact, trustee Proctor was talking about earlier, how nice it looked on Saturday night with the lights on, the waterfall's going. It looked beautiful out there. You guys came in first class. So we thank you for that. We appreciate that. And I know some people were squawking that we started a little bit late, but we were waiting for the veterans that were at Oak Grove High School that day. The high school does a nice Veterans Day memorial at the school, and a lot of people in our event, including the guest speaker, the woman that brings the wreath that we laid for Veterans Day, they were delayed at the high school, and we thought it would not be appropriate not to start without them. So we waited a little bit for it. And again, like I told you, believe about one-tenth of one percent what you read on Facebook. Don't believe 99.9%. People just have axes to grind, they make things up, and they don't know the truth. But we're happy to do it. It turned out well. And again, Kobe, thank you. The veterans absolutely love it. They gave a thumbs up. You saw Terry Tomaso. Get a thumbs up from Terry is not easy, and you guys got it that day. So nice job. Good news, good news. As people may know, if you've read the paper lately, some of our neighboring communities, Mount Prescott was in the Herald recently, raising their property taxes 5% next year. I saw St. Charles raising their property taxes 3.4% next year. Lot of towns. I'm proud to announce tonight, on the agenda, we'll be passing a property tax reduction next year. We'll be cutting property taxes 1.7%. We're very proud to be able to do that. I've been telling you, the village is doing very well. You all remember getting a nice gift card, which was giving your money back to you. That's taxed dollars we didn't need, we gave it back to you. Government doesn't do that often. We did. So next year, we'll be cutting our property taxes by 1.7%. Also, we are going to be moving a million dollars of excess revenue this year into the pension fund. So we're going to put more money into the police and fire pension. We're going to put an extra half a million dollars in the police, extra half a million dollars in fire. We also this year, even though we're cutting taxes next year by 1.7, we're also increasing our money into the police-fire pension by a million dollars next year also. So we're taking that money, we investing back where it belongs. Again, we got the best policemen, firemen, best workers in the village. We're taking care of the pensions, and we're taking care of the taxpayers by cutting taxes next year by 1.7%. We're proud to do that for it. Also tonight, want to show you, on the agenda, we got folks back there work for them, Stern Pinball is locating their headquarters and consolidating their operations here in Oak Grove Village. They've had a facility in Oak Grove, they're now consolidating all their operations to Oak Grove. Stern Pinball is the biggest pinball maker in the world, and they're here in Oak Grove Village. We're very proud of that. And so what they're doing is they're locating over at the corner of Bussy and Landmeyer and the Prologis Building, the white building across the street, and they're going to be decorating, sprucing up a little bit with some little decoration from Stern Pinball. You see also out in front of the main door, I see, but on this one right there, they're going to have a big pinball that people come by, they do tours. Believe it or not, they do tours at Stern Pinball. So you can come by, get a tour, you can get your picture by the pinball. And what's neat is they're going to have, on the first floor, they're going to be selling pinball machines. So they have a display on the first floor, come in, take a look at them, you can buy them directly from there. They've never done that before. They're doing it for the first time here in Oak Grove, they're selling to the public. So I mean, they sell, we used to do distributors, wholesalers, now they're going to sell right here in Oak Grove. So if you like pinball machines, us older people grew up on them, and I know young people like them too, here's the new Stern Pinball. The lighting, you go by at nighttime like tonight with the leaves down, real visible, that's going to look gorgeous. It's going to really be a focal point in Oak Grove. So we thank Stern for choosing to make the machines here in Oak Grove. We're a huge manufacturer here in Oak Grove. We're second in the state only to Chicago. And now Stern Pinball are coming to make more machines here in Oak Grove Village. And so we're excited about it. We thank Stern for investing in Oak Grove and partnering with our community. We're very excited about that, and that'll be happening soon. Matter of fact, I had a chance last Thursday, go by a company called Creative Works, and you say, who's Creative Works? Well, Creative Works moved their headquarters to Oak Grove Village at Christmas time, young guys, girls, those candy canes with like M&amp;M's in them, and all those plastic candy canes, they got M&amp;M's candy in it? Creative Works makes that, puts the candy in it, and then sells them out, distributes them out. So they put together a lot of different candy components. Believe it or not, when I was there on Thursday, they're already done with Christmas. They're already working on Valentine's Day and Easter. That's how far in advance they make these candies. They run 24 hours a day, a lot of the lines, seven days a week. So they're expanding in Oak Grove, their headquarters here now. So we have a lot of manufacturing going on. We're excited. I know we talk a lot about data centers, but we also have a lot of manufacturing going on here in Oak Grove. We're excited about that. Speaking of excitement, last Wednesday, we had an open house for the new development at Ardentite Road in Higgins. Almost 270 residents came by to view the different options that were presented. We had four options given to us. 270 people, they were actually lined up outside the door 15 minutes before we started, so we let them in early. It's nice to see that much excitement and input from the residents. And staff put together all the questions and all the comments for us, and did a great job organizing. I should say Maggie and Caroline, thank you. They did a great job, and that way we can review, as you go on, people's ideas, people's comments, people's thoughts. We want your input. So what's happened is this again, right now, there's four proposals. We're gathering all the information, we got questions to ask still, we'll be getting more answers. After the first of the year, if not earlier, we'll narrow it down to one developer. Then we'll work with that developer to come up with a final plan. When the final plan is finished, but before we vote on it, before it's finalized, we're going to go out to the public once again. We're going to set up an open house again and allow people to come by and review the plans, give us input again. Then we'll finalize the details, and we'll announce the final plan hopefully next spring, if not sooner. A lot of work going on with traffic studies, a lot of people asking about parking, all that stuff's got to be answered. But again, we're trying to involve the public in this. We're trying to be as open as we can be on this project, because it's a big, important one for the village. So I thank everyone for that came. It was up on the website from Wednesday night till Friday night. We got a lot of comments, I think Caroline, right? People commented off the website. So we got it out as much as we could to the public, and we thank everyone that came and gave input. We really appreciate that. A lot of good ideas came out of it. So that is actually Mr. Nikabaka, before we have some awards come out. The last but not least item, we've got one more to go. Everyone waits every year for a lineup for this summer's concerts. And remember this year, we're doing five shows, five weeks of shows, and we're excited. We want to thank Oak Grove Park District. I know they couldn't make it tonight. We want to thank the parkers for partnering with us to bring this to you. I think this is, we started in 2006, so this is what, a 16th year or something like that of doing it? So we're excited about it. And without me flapping my guns anymore, Caroline, unveil this year's lineup. So this year's lineup is by far the most expensive, it's on our agenda tonight, contract, but it's also, I believe, probably the biggest name stars week after week after week we've ever had. Mr. Nikabaka's got to learn these because I'll be asking him every week. So we are going to start off, we're hoping the third time's a charm, getting KC and Sunshine Band.
Good luck.
If remember, two years ago, COVID shut it down. Last year, the 4th of July, obviously the tragedy in Highland Park, our hearts go out to everyone with what happened there. So we're hoping the third time's a charm. Then the second concert, I say, I predict, probably has more hits than any band we're having this year, The Spinners. They're coming to do the show, the second show. Then the third show, for you younger people, as my kids say, Dad, will you ever get a band that's not on oxygen? I said, well, this year, we got a band that's not on oxygen. We got the All-American Rejects. Look at that. The younger people are happy as can be. I said, if you're between age 25 and 45, 50, you'll love them. I mean, they were full of, the biggest arena was just five, six years ago. So we got All-American Rejects, and they'll be playing at the Roadie Fest. Remember, we do the Thursday night of the Roadie Fest. So you got the Beer Tent, you got All-American Rejects, what a better night you can have in Oak Grove. You're good to go. Then our fourth one is a classic, the Oak Ridge Boys are coming. Boom-oppa, boom-oppa mama, we know. They're coming, and we're excited about it. And I think the biggest show this year will be the last one. You got Heart with Ann Wilson. You can't beat that. So that'll be the lineup this year. They'll be playing our concerts. We're excited. Again, tonight, we'll be passing the contract. We want to thank Murray Weiner in particular, VMG, who puts up with my headache. Kitty, he has headaches for me too, but not like Murray gets. And I give his son Jake a lot of credit. Jake came up with the All-American Rejects. He's the same age as the 25 to 50 age group. He said the same thing, Mayor, let's get one that's not on oxygen. So we got the All-American Rejects. So we're excited, it's going to be a hell of a lineup, and just think, it's only about eight months away. We'll be talking about concerts out, and nice, warm weather, no snow those days, right, Mr. Nikabaka?
True.
So again, we're excited about it, we're excited to do it for the community, and no Stevie Nicks yet, but don't give up hope. I never do. So we'll keep working on it, you never know what may happen. Miracles, it's almost the miracle season, right?
True.
It is. So you never know what Santa might bring for me. So we'll see. So that concludes the mayor's written, or oral report. Now we got to do awards report. Do we have some folks here from the Lions Club tonight? Yes, come on down. Ms. Kreitzer here is on, is that on? Okay. Ms. Kreitzer is on the District 214 High School Board, does a phenomenal job for our high school district and represents Oak Grove like no one else. We appreciate it. But she was at Roland Meadows High School yesterday, and she saw the first lady, Ms. Jill Byden. So exciting?
Oh, kids were thrilled.
They had a good time? Lot of security?
I had about a 10-second conversation with her.
They did? Good.
I've never seen so many law enforcement in my life. Secret Service, State Police, you name it. Yeah, but it was good.
It was fun. It's like a different era when you
And I have to, remember the other day, I told you, I said to you, when I heard that she was going to Meadows, I said, why not Oak Grove? I found out the reason, because President Biden was just here.
Oh, that's right. But doesn't mean she can't come.
Yeah, I know. Well, I tried.
They tried being fair. Yeah, we had, remember, President Biden came out to Microsoft last October, and Ms. Biden went, and she just talked about manufacturing. And in Oak Grove High School, we have a manufacturing lab that does very well. And to Ms. Kreitzer's credit, she goes, well, why don't you come to Oak Grove? We got a manufacturing lab. But I understand, they want to play the political fairness and stuff. But I told her, I said, the neat part of it, when I saw when the president came, I've been to the White House a few times, but first time the president come to Oak Grove, I said, the neat part to watch for is the amount of security. It is beyond belief. And I wasn't sure what the first lady got compared to the president, but you just heard, a lot of security. So it's also an honor to meet the people and stuff.
Thank you.
So thank you. Okay, so while we're here for tonight, all the young people here, except for the scouts that are earning their badges, don't forget to see me after the meeting's over. Got to stay awake, that means, when Mr. Frankie talks, you got to still stay awake. I know it's not easy. I take toothpicks, and I put them in my eyes, and it works.
Yeah, yeah, that's it.
But tonight, we're here to recognize Halloween award winners. It doesn't seem, it's not that long ago. What is it, only about three weeks was Halloween? Not that, two weeks ago was Halloween. We had a great day again. Oh, by the way, I might as well announce now, we are changing the hours of trick-or-treating next year. It will still be on actual Halloween, but instead of 1 to 8, it will be 3 to 8. We haven't seen that many young people, is why we started earlier, they have not been coming out. Obviously, there's a mass of young people complaining, we'll review it. But for next year, it'll be 3 o'clock to 8 o'clock on Halloween. With that said, the Lions Club does phenomenal job running the contest. It's all yours.
Thank you very much. Is everyone here?
That one's the only one out here.
Sure.
Why don't you first talk about the Lions Club and what you can tell that?
Hi, I'm Karen Hicks. I'm the president of the Oak Grove Lions Club. I'm also here with some of our Leos. I'm the advisor for the Leo Club, which is age 12 to 18, kind of a way to start young people out doing community service and learning about the Lions Club. The organization itself has been around since, yeah, early 1900s, 1920, something like that. Started by kind of a dare of Helen Keller, who said, hey, why don't you people that were part of the Chicago businessman circle initially, why don't you do more to help the blind? And that's one of our main functions, is helping blind and deaf people and also handicapped. And we also like to be very active in community service, any possible way that we can help. We do the judging for these decorating contests. We will be out there on November 25th at the tree lighting, serving the hot chocolate and the cookies. We'll be in those tents there. We hope everybody can come out and see us for that. And for the Halloween contest that we just judged, we have the houses, you know, make sure they're displayed for about a week, and everybody kind of goes out as they can, takes a look, and then we, you know, send our votes in and see what's going on. We've had a tremendous success the last couple of years that I've been involved with the judging. The people who are doing this put so much effort into decorating their houses and making them look just spectacular. I think some people must start weeks and weeks before the holiday to get it done. And every time I go out and look, I think, where do they put that stuff when the holiday's over? I mean, you need like an extra garage or a third level on your house or something. So So, um, the first, uh, award that I would like to give is, uh, for the outstanding overall Halloween theme, and that is to the Melford family.
Come on down.
Yeah, come on down. Thank you. This house was so beautiful. They had just such a great attention to detail and so many different displays out there. It's phenomenal. Now, guys, yeah, this is a beautiful job. Do you guys, do you guys help your parents?
Yeah.
Yeah? Did you come up with anything that's like your own input in that?
Uh, we came up with, uh... We came up with the thing on the ground with a bunch of hands coming out and...
That was kind of scary.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So how long does it take you to set all this up?
Not long. It takes probably a day to two days, but we start right around Labor Day. I can hold her off until Labor Day.
So it's up almost two months then?
Yeah.
Oh, that's awesome.
Christmas is up the next day, the day after Halloween.
So you already did your Christmas stuff?
Yeah.
Now, do you enter the Christmas contest too?
We don't usually, no.
No? Well, you got to think about it.
You might as well give it a try.
Are you doing the Christmas decorations?
We are, we are doing the Christmas decorating, yes, for sure.
Nice about Halloween, at least it's warm.
Yeah.
When it's, and actually set up the Christmas is warm. It's when you're taking it down.
Yeah.
Uh, it gets cold. Well, congratulations. Good job.
Congratulations. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Want to get a picture?
Yes.
Yeah, right around here in front of the podium here. There you go. Well, I'll get a picture. Yeah, go on, ladies, go on. You're fine. Yeah, you're fine. You're good. Can you get us? Emma, can you get us?
Yes.
Congratulations. Good job. Let's go and wear your dresses.
Yes, yes. I can't remember.
Okay, um, this is Rosaria Depple, and she is our president of the Leo Club. And she's going to present for the outstanding scariest display, and that's the Gura family.
Want to come out, Gura family?
Um, honestly, I thought this house was really creative. There was a lot of different characters I saw in there. It wasn't just, um, just like the plain old skeleton. I saw a lot of different, like, interesting characters, and I really liked, oh, I really liked those twins that they had there too, the, um, ghost twins. I thought that was really creative. Um, and I really liked the way, like, the house just opened up as a tunnel, almost like you were walking into like a haunted house. I think those were really cool. But overall, it was really creative, and, um, I think you guys put a lot of hard work into it, I can tell. So, yeah.
Who laid it out? Who came up?
So that, we, we're on about four or five years now doing this. It started as a small cemetery. We won best overall last year. We had so many people walk through it that this year we had to add a path.
Really?
Yeah. Like, keep, so people come and taking pictures and doing videos, and, uh, we actually added a path. And we actually joined, my wife put us on two or three, the Haunted Chicago list. We probably had about four or five hundred people, four or five hundred people visit the house this year.
Wow.
And on Halloween, we ran out of candy, which we've never had happen before. Um, I, I probably had, I used to get like twenty or thirty trick-or-treaters. I probably had, I don't know, two hundred.
Wow.
Yeah.
That's great. Well, it looks great. Do you enjoy doing it, buddy? Anything you look forward to?
They spend every day running through the path.
Well, we appreciate you doing it. And so you've been doing this. Now, do you do anything for the holidays coming up, or?
Uh, yeah, right now, we have a half a dozen turkeys in the yard, inflatable turkeys for Thanksgiving. And then, uh, I leave the orange lights up for Thanksgiving. And then, uh, for Christmas, I, we don't go as big, but I do fill the yard. It'll change, you know, the day after Thanksgiving, on Friday or Saturday, it'll come down and that'll come out.
Hopefully, have some nice weather for you.
Yeah. Well, you should pick the best day in the weekend, like, you get done on day.
Okay. Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
Let's go down, we'll get a picture. Come on around.
Thank you. I'd like to now introduce Jenna Colts, who is our Leo past president and current secretary. And she is going to give the award for outstanding child-friendly display. That is the Newkirk family.
All right. All right. So I thought this one was definitely the most child-friendly of all of them. I loved the use of all the vibrant colors and all the different characters they had. And as Lion Karen said, where do you guys even store all this stuff? Like, that's another level of dedication there, so...
Another level of effort.
Yeah. Yeah. Your effort was very evident, and I'm sure many kids on the block appreciated it. Yeah. Well deserved.
Okay, good. Who, whose idea go kid-friendly type and all that? Who was?
Well, we're a huge Disney family. Uh, we go to Disney a lot, and Nightmare Before Christmas is our favorite.
Okay.
Um, as you can tell, we wore the theme tonight. Uh, but we've added to it. We've, we've now lived here five years. I love this town. I love this community.
Thank you.
And we've added it every year to the display, so I'm so thankful. Thank you so much.
So where do you actually store?
The whole attic, yeah. All above the garage, he puts it up there.
I climb, I climb up there the day after Halloween and store it all away.
It's a lot.
And it's, yes.
So how long does it take you to set all that up?
Uh, it takes us the better part of a day.
Okay.
But it's not necessarily the setup part that's so difficult. It's, it's pretty not wind-friendly, so when the wind starts to blow, we have to manage and re tie.
Yes, he came to take pictures, and I had it all tied down.
And he asked us, is it, is it up? No, it wasn't.
No, they're like my babies. Those blowups right there.
Buckets over it, so there's just like buckets in the yard.
So you put buckets when it's raining, don't you?
Yeah, so that way, so that way they, so that way they don't get damaged.
Okay.
I take very good care of them.
That's how protective she is of these floats.
Well, it shows. She does a good job. She'll be proud of it. Now, do you do anything, do you do any holiday, or mainly focus on Halloween?
We focus on Halloween. It's our favorite.
Halloweens are our thing.
That's a big holiday.
And so many people come now to see it, so we love it.
Does it make you feel good? Do you run out of candy too, though?
Oh, we go through, I think we went through about eighty pounds of candy this Halloween. So it was fun.
Well, that's great.
You can see the house, and they think, that house has good candy.
Now, you should tell them, we spent all our candy money on decorate, no. But that's great. Well, we thank you all of you that spend the time and effort. It makes Elk Grove a better community because of the effort you put in. So thank you all for willing to do that kind of work. And this is a little thank you that we can do at the Lions Club, to help in the Leos Club. I mean, it shows the uniqueness of Elk Grove, how we all work together. So we appreciate it. So let's go up and get a picture. Ladies, I'll make sure I take care of you before you go.
They never do.
Um, I just wanted to mention the, uh, the other winner. There was a fourth category that we had. The winner couldn't be here, but it's the outstanding use of decorations on a condo or apartment. And we added that in a couple of years ago because everybody in Elk Grove is part of our community, and some people don't have that full expanse of a lawn, but they want to decorate. So if they just have a balcony or an entryway or something, we wanted to give them a category where they're competing amongst the same size of property, instead of trying to compete against somebody who's got that big lawn and, you know, two stories of windows and whatever to decorate. So, um, Kim Tob, Toby, not really sure how to say it, but she was the winner for that. Um, she did not make it here, but it's something, if you do know anybody that's living in an apartment or a townhouse with a small entry, you know, it's not, it doesn't count like lawn, but tell them to, you know, think about that for future contests. Thank you.
And we want to thank the Lions Club. They do a phenomenal job. You know, it used to be we had tons of clubs. We had the J C's and all the rest. Now, we've basically got the Lions Club and the Rotary Club are the two main civic groups that are left. And we want to thank you, especially young ladies getting involved, the Leo Club and all that. That means a lot, and, um, do a lot of good for the community. You've done it for years, and we thank you for that. And, uh, we thank you for the judging. I mean, you got this, and then you'll be going on a Christmas judging. That's exciting time. So again, on behalf of the village, we thank you. We want to give out some, you know, with the work you do, you each get three this time. You did a great job. So thank you very much. I appreciate all the work.
Oh, my goodness gracious.
Enjoy it. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you again. Folks, let's give everyone a big hand. Thank you. So, the rest of you folks, when you're going, you can, to understand your problem, but when you're going, it's getting late, so... Thank you, Peter. Thank you for what you did. Thank you. Okay, Chiefs, I know you'll be crying. I won't forget you all.
There you go.
That's the one, please, if I're you crying. Now, Scouts, remember, there's going to be a test at the end of the meeting to see how much you're paying attention. I gave some big dollar figures. When I see if you remember those numbers. Just, we'll see. Okay, we want trustee's report. Why don't we start with trustee Jeffrey Charles Frankie?
I wonder if I can talk as long as you did in your report?
No.
No report.
Trustee Miller. What are you laughing at?
So, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to, um, reiterate your thoughts on how wonderful our staff has been. Um, I wanted to thank, um, Public Works, first of all. The vacuum, that vacuum, vacuums the leaves, amazing. Um, and I wanted to thank, um, Joe Bush at the Elk Grove High School, because I know his class had gone out to help some of the residents rake the leaves, and you had to pick those up. So thank you, Colby. And, um, again, I also want to thank the staff for at the open house with the, um, housing, the, the development of Arlington Heights and Higgins. The staff was amazing. Um, I loved how they, uh, answered questions. So, Matt, thank you for your staff. Um, and I wanted to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. That concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee Miller. Trustee listener.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a real brief report. Uh, this Thursday, I'll be representing you, Mayor, and the trustees, uh, talking to some forty or so Cub Scouts. Thanks to Deputy Village Clerk, uh, Jennifer Mayon. Uh, she actually did all the work. I'm just showing up. And, uh, we're looking forward to doing it, so... In fact, I may be joined by trustee Schmidt, so since he's so big in scouting, that would be great, a great addition. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee listener. Trustee Prognol.
Uh, thank you, um, everyone. We've talked about having the, um, the Veterans Day observation on, on, um, November eleventh over at the, at our memorial park, and that was a beautiful, beautiful ceremony. We usually have the observation at the V F W post every year. And in addition to that, in the previous few years, I've attended, and I did attend again this year, um, a Veterans Day breakfast at Elk Grove High School. And it followed by a school assembly honoring our veterans. The theme of the, of the assembly was service never stops. And it's very interesting, because if you'll recall, for several years, we've had Veterans Day has been a day where there is no school. Well, that really didn't teach our students anything about Veterans Days and what it meant. So by having school and having this assembly, um, we were able to gather the veterans in the community to come and be celebrated with a breakfast and an assembly, uh, thanking the pro-start classes at Elk Grove High School for making a delicious breakfast for everyone to enjoy. And a special thank you to U S history teacher Stephanie Byrne. She's the one who thought about organizing this. I think it's been four or five years now. She, at, at least she's been doing this assembly, and it's just so meaningful, and the students really, um, give a standing ovation to our veterans and make them feel very, very special. So thank you, Stephanie, for putting together another wonderful event. Uh, also, on another note, reminder that the Winter's Farmer Market is at Christus Victor Church. It's every other Saturday, um, from eight A M. to one P M. And that church is across the street from the theater on Arlington Heights Road. Uh, we just had one this past Saturday, so the next Farmer's Market will be Saturday, November twenty-sixth. You can come by for, they have some produce. They have a lot of different items. They have some gift items you can sell. Maybe you find something to pick up as a little Christmas gift. Um, but please stop by and give our market a, a try. That's Saturday, November twenty-sixth, from eight A M. to one P M. And you might notice I'm wearing my snowflake earrings, because today we started with our first snow, which means this is the first time I'm going to get on my soapbox, snowbox. I do this every year as a reminder. Um, when the snow comes, be a good neighbor. Clean your sidewalks. Keep your sidewalks clean. Keep your driveway clean. If you have an elderly neighbor or a disabled neighbor, please help them clear their space off. It makes walking so much safer. A lot of people rely on walking to get to and from different locations, or school, or just out there for exercise. And let's, let's try and keep them all safe and keep those sidewalks clear. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Trustee Schmidt.
Just have one item, Mr., uh, Mr. Mayor and I. You and I attended Des' Raftery's retirement on Friday, November fourth. Uh, Des was our social worker in the police department for, uh, twenty-two years. He was really not only just in the police department, but he was for the entire village. He did a lot of work, uh, when I was chief, and then picked up when Chuck Walsh became the chief. And, uh, he was really there for us when he was asked and he was needed. And I know he worked with you, Mayor, big with the Elk Grove Cares Program, so he'll be sorely missed. But, uh, we wish him a very, him and his wife a very long and healthy, happy retirement. And that concludes my report.
And we're always going to miss that accent.
Yes.
That Irish, you know, like that. Um, thank you. It concludes the, uh, trustee's report. Uh, we did get a call, um, former President Trump asked us to hurry up, because people watch us, and they won't watch his announcement tonight. I said, we'll get done when we're done, sir. You guys just got to wait your turn. So we'll get moving on. Uh, we have a accounts payable warrant for October thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two.
I move approval of the October thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two accounts payable warrant in the amount of six million, seventy-four thousand, nine hundred and ninety-two dollars and thirteen cents.
We have motion by trustee listener, or second by trustee Frankie. Uh, that figure I'm seeing, six, that's your paycheck, isn't it? The thirteen cents?
Close.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Okay, um, Jen, can you call the hall, please?
Trustee Frankie?
Aye.
Trustee listener?
Aye.
Trustee Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Prognol?
Aye.
Trustee Schmidt?
Motion passes five to nothing. We have November fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two.
I move approval of the November fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two accounts payable warrant in the amount of four hundred and eighty-two thousand, one hundred and thirty-five dollars and ten cents.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by trustee Miller. Motion by trustee listener, without objection. Record the vote as previously demonstrated. Five to nothing. Um, count, our consensus tonight, one correction. Item K, um, that's our schedule for next year, it's showing December nineteenth. We're actually going to do December twelfth. So that needs to be adjusted, please. Uh, so that's item K, date should be December twelfth, twenty-twenty-three. My God, we're talking twenty-twenty-three December. You know how much nicer it'd be on the meeting on December twenty-third?
Yes.
Or December twelfth, twenty-twenty-three?
Absolutely.
How much more enjoyable it'd be for me?
What?
How relaxing it'd be? How happy? How relaxing it'd be, how happy, how quality control we have? Okay, the items tonight, we have items A as in Allegheny, through U as in Universal. I need a motion.
Some more.
Second. We have motion by trustee Jeffrey Charles Frankie, a second by trustee Listener. Any questions, comments from any board members, staff tonight, and consenting general? Anybody in the audience? Nobody wants to remove the stern pinball? You sure? Going once? Come on. Okay, we'll leave it on there. Uh, and without objection, record the vote as previously demonstrated. Five to nothing. Folks, you're all good. If you want to get going, you're fine. And thank you very much. Appreciate it. We have stern pinball folks back there. That's who I was talking to. Okay, we run out to regular general, which we have no items. Plan Commission, Mr. Roan?
No items under Plan Commission.
How about zoning boards approval?
No items under zoning boards of appeals.
Just checking, just checking. Uh, very good. Thank you. Recycling Waste Committee, trustee Fiker's not here. Does somebody have a comment?
I do. You didn't think he'd let it go without something, would you? Uh, trustee Fiker asked me to make everyone aware that today is National Recycling Day, and he would like you to take a moment or two to think about what you could do at home or at work to help recycle a little bit better than you have been doing. And that concludes my report.
And we also passed tonight the Sustainability Plan. Was that, um?
We have published that after.
Very good. Thank you. So we're getting the word out, how you can make the world greener and more efficient. Judiciary Planning, trustee Prochnow.
No report.
And Capital Improvement Committee, trustee Schmidt.
Uh, you covered it under the, uh, your report with Arlington Heights Road. I just, uh, ask everyone to be extremely careful when driving through the zone, especially this time of year with the weather turning. And, uh, be aware of the construction workers there so they can get this job done on time. That concludes my report.
Yeah, with the early sunset.
Yes.
Cut down the time to work.
They're working.
Makes it tough, does it, Colby?
Right, very much.
Yeah. But if we get some good weather, we'll be good.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Cable Television Committee, trustee Listener.
No reporting.
Wow, what's going on?
I wasn't going to talk about Trump's talk tonight, but I dropped it.
Yes. Um, Youth Committee, trustee Jeffrey Charles Frankie.
We're just trying to think of new things. That's all we have.
Okay. Information Committee, trustee Miller.
Well, I have some things. Um, Stuff the Squad. Yeah, this is exciting stuff. This is the second year of Stuff the Squad. Our police officers, um, are going to be at Walmart on Meacham uh, on Saturday, November twenty-sixth, from ten AM to two PM. Officers will stand out in front of the store in uniform and collect unwrapped gifts from residents or patrons as they go in and out of Walmart. Uh, these gifts will be turned over to the Chicagoland Toys for Tots and ultimately make their way to less fortunate boys and girls for Christmas. Um, last year, I think, how many squad cars did you fill?
Quite a few, three or four.
I think that, yeah, that's awesome. So again, that is Saturday, November twenty-sixth. Um, if you saw boxes out in the, the hallways, um, and several different locations around the community, at the Park District and the library. Um, there are, the Community Character Coalition is also collecting Toys for Tots for underprivileged children, and I think it's up to age seventeen that those toys go to. So we really would like to get as many as possible, and that is going to be until December sixth. And then finally, District Fifty-nine is still having their coat drive, um, until this Friday, November eighteenth, and maybe the nineteenth. You can drop off, um, nice coats at the Administration Building in District Fifty-nine. Um, for other information, factual information, please check the village website, Instagram, um, and the newsletters, um, for very complete information. And if you haven't found that, call the staff or call the office. That concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee Miller. Business Leaders Forum, trustee Schmidt.
Yes, uh, several weeks ago, Josh Grajan and I visited the SNS Panel Company over in Brickvale Avenue in Elk Grove Village. This is a company that provides facades to the, um, uh, to, uh, commercial buildings. And, uh, they've been in business since, doing this since nineteen eighty-two, but their company originally started eighteen ninety in Milwaukee as a storage company. But the interesting thing that, uh, we discussed was caulk. They provide a commercial caulk for a lot of the commercial buildings in this area in the Midwest. Every day, there's construction people that show up there. Uh, this is the caulk that's applied to the buildings to hold windows and window frames in place on a lot of commercial buildings and high-rises. And I found out that, uh, there's forty different colors of caulk, and Elk Grove, this building in Elk Grove is the only place in the United States where you can get all forty colors. And, uh, there is a shortage of caulk. And I asked, why would there be a shortage of caulk? He said, because the companies that make it, they don't have enough workers to produce the caulk. So there is a shortage in the construction, uh, business right now with caulk. So that was rather interesting, and, uh, they, they, they have orders, they backorder, which is a domino effect with the construction, uh, with the construction businesses now. So it's, uh, rather interesting how different products here affect our construction, uh, works in the Chicagoland area. So that concludes my report.
So every single color you'll find somewhere on this village hall?
Yes, it's in, this is, he said this is the only location in the United States that has all forty colors available. I didn't even know there was forty colors of caulk.
I didn't. That's interesting.
Yes.
Thank you. Health and Community Services, trustee Prochnow.
Uh, thank you. On Saturday, November twelfth, Elk Grove Village sponsored a community blood drive. We brought in forty-nine collections, which helps save one hundred and forty-seven lives. Eight people were unable to donate. And the next time we'll be having a blood drive will be, uh, Saturday, January fourteenth in twenty twenty-three. Um, also, on a different note, if anyone is interested in helping someone out in our community and sponsoring during the season, um, to sponsor someone for a, a holiday meal or Christmas gifts for their family, there are several locations you can contact if you feel like donating. The Kenneth Young Center is doing an adoptive family. The Elk Grove Township is also doing adoptive families where they're collecting, um, gifts and food. And the Village of Elk Grove also has community services. We do adoptive family too. So if you have an interest in helping out some, some family in your community, please contact one of these three locations. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Personnel Committee, trustee Jeffrey Charles Frankie again.
I wish I had a report on this, but I can't talk about it. So I guess I'll have to say no report.
Okay. Airport update? Uh, nothing yet. We're still working on the Flight Quiet Rotation Plan and, um, be working on, get that, you know, hopefully up and going soon. They got a lot of things going on, but we'll stay on top of it. Parade Committee, uh, next meeting won't be till January. Obviously, it's going to be hard to top what we did last year, but of course, we will. And, uh, because it leads into the best Oktoberfest around. And I've checked, trustee, I found no other Frankie Fest in the entire world except Elk Grove. So you should be proud. We're the only Frankie Fest out there.
And it should be that way, but, you know, the Oktoberfest, but then you take into the, we're in the Christmas now, even though there are no relation, but Frankie's donating the Christmas tree.
Frankie's everywhere. So we have Frankie Fest, Frankie Eve, Frankie Day?
I'm working on Fourth of July.
Very good. Um, Midsummer Concert Classic Series. Mr. Knickerbocker, first chance. What's our lineup?
Casey and the Sunshine Band.
Very good.
Uh, Spinners.
Very good.
All-American Rejects.
Very good.
That was hard.
That was a hard one?
Yeah.
Okay. Can you name one of the songs?
No. Not even close.
Next.
Uh, Oak Brook Boys?
Oak Brook.
Oak Ridge, Oak Ridge somebody.
The Oak Brook Boys.
They're from Oak Brook, aren't they? Oak Ridge.
Oak Ridge, very good.
It was close, one word.
It's like xylophone, but go ahead.
No, nothing like that.
And we finish up with, you're dear to my, near my.
Pardon me?
You're near to my.
No, I'm not. Anne Wilson of Heart.
Very good, Georgie. Very good, pass the thing.
I paid attention to everything.
Remembered forty-five minutes ago. Very good.
Trustee, that's very good for George.
I do.
That's very good.
I do.
Okay, so the summer concerts will be coming up. Looking forward to it. Special events. What's the next special event coming up?
I believe it would be the, uh, Christmas tree lighting.
And what band's playing for that?
New Colony Six.
Very good. And what's the special feature this year?
My tree.
Your special car.
A special car, right. You ever driving it?
No, you tried that.
Tried getting in it?
Yeah, no, I, that would be hard.
Yeah, we're looking forward to tree lighting. Have you such a fan? No, I didn't look at commission. Report from our beloved village manager.
No report.
From our village clerk.
No report.
I did notice we're down ten percent, the number of voters this year compared to two thousand eighteen. Forty-four hundred down to four thousand.
Well, there was a total of three thousand nine hundred and sixty-seven ballots cast.
Right, and there was total of almost four thousand four hundred in twenty eighteen.
Mm-hmm.
I'm surprised, because it seemed like it was crowded.
It was crowded.
Yeah, so I was shocked it was down. But they did a great job. Thank you. I know all the judges thank you very much. You do a phenomenal job setting up for them. Well, let me ask you, they've never had voting on Election Day there, have they?
Here?
Yeah.
No.
No, they've never done that.
No, they.
You go to your polling places.
Yes, correct.
Yeah, because I know that some people are saying they should have voting here. I said, I don't think we've ever had it.
They all think that they do their voting here on Election Day, but we, we don't.
We've never done that.
Only early voting site.
But DuPage County has started doing that.
Well, that's DuPage, but Elk Grove. Yeah. No. But yeah, we've never done it. Am I right?
Correct.
Okay, that's what I thought. Okay, um, there's no unfinished business. As usual, there's nothing on Mr. Knickerbocker. Um, any new business items for board members tonight? Mr. Listener, oh my gosh.
He remembered a cable.
Well, just a quick thing. I, I forgot to mention this earlier, but I thought Christopher Plasek did a very nice story on the, uh, Wednesday Night Open House and the proposals.
Yeah.
Nice big story on page three. Uh, thank you, Chris. That's all I have.
She get a chocolate for that.
Yeah, just here.
I, I don't know.
I am out for good.
Maybe, yeah, maybe.
L-I-S-S-N-E-R.
Yeah, yeah, make sure.
I'm on a, I'm on a short string right now, so.
No, he did do a nice job. Thank you. Um, any questions, comments from anybody in the audience? Sampson, how we doing, buddy?
Tuesday.
See? Look at that. Look at the, don't you see the power?
I do, I do.
Just the power. It just like emanates out of it.
I noticed that about six months ago.
It's like when you see a child in Heston in the Ten Commandments, and he goes up to the burning bush, it just like radiates out. It's just the power, it's radiating out. Mr. Shavel.
What about Noel Brooks in the fifteen?
I was going to say, did he come down with fifteen?
Fifteen, damn. The Ten Commandments. Okay. Helen, anything good?
At the Shield Ray Center, for those that signed up, the veterans get a free lunch tomorrow. It's very nice.
For the veterans tomorrow? That is very nice. Thank you. And he filled in very well for you at the, he actually had, what'd you have, three questions, right?
Yeah.
Yep, three things. Oh, he did. He said, Mayor Johnson's the greatest, Noel Mary Johnson's the very greatest.
That is a question.
He goes, Mayor Johnson, very various greatest.
Those were questions.
But no, he represents you very well, Helen. Did a good job. So, okay, Scouts, before you get your awards tonight. Earlier on, Mr. Trustee Schmidt said how many colors of caulk there are, and they are all here in the village. Who knows how many, no, what's the number? Yes, sir.
Forty?
Very good. So you won. You won. So in a minute, we'll be gabble out. Come on down here. I got some special treats for you and all that. We got you taken care of. Okay, good job. Do you have any questions you need to ask us? No? Good. You just want to get home, right?
Yeah.
Yes. And President Trump has sent us five messages. I say, please stop, Mayor. No one's watching me. No one's watching me. So.
Wait a minute, you gotta, I mean, when the All-American Rejects were playing, these guys' heads were bobbing.
Oh, they're dancing. You know that band?
Yes.
You do? Wow. Do you know the Spinners? Do you know the Oak Ridge Boys?
No, I was, uh, I was looking into listening to them now.
What about the Oak Brook Boys?
Yeah, you know, the Oak Brook Boys. Okay, so as we're going to get done for you, I need a motion to adjourn.
Some more, second.
We have motion by trustee Miller, second by trustee Frankie. Jen, call the roll, please.
Happy Thanksgiving. Trustee Listener?
Aye.
Trustee Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Prochnow?
Aye.
Trustee Schmidt?
Aye.
Trustee Frankie?
Aye.
The motion to adjourn passes five to nothing. Folks, remember, next week is Thanksgiving. Have a very safe, happy, and be thankful. What a difference. Two years ago, we were going through the pandemic, to now the fans can get together and enjoy it. So enjoy it, take care, God bless. Meeting adjourned.